I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, December 2, 2025 commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsythe.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Here.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Fields from the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is a very exciting evening. The first item on the agenda is a special orders of the day with a recognition of Councilmembers Gerald Lee Anderson and Steve Fields for their service to the Redmond community. But before I invite Councilmember Anderson up, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember, now Representative Solahudin for serving with the City of Redmond for two years. We are very excited for you and your new role and look forward to continuing working with you as a 48th legislator. Congratulations on your new role. We miss you. I would love to invite Councilmember Anderson up to join me. Councilmember Anderson was elected in 2017 and has been on the City Council for eight years. She's made definitely an impact on the city from Vision Zero to her advocacy for bike lanes and many other things. I just want to say thank you to her and thank you for the community and we have this for you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Anderson would like to say a few words.
Hello, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. As I reflect on the last few years on this council, I am humbled and filled with gratitude for the opportunities and privilege of meeting and working with so many people across our Redmond neighborhoods. Whether it was at the door or in chambers, I appreciated and enjoyed listening to all of the diverse perspectives across the city and from regional partners. For the council and staff leaders, it was a sincere honor and privilege to build policies for the community that we can all be proud of for future new generations, even if that included some disagreements sometimes. I am most proud of our environmental sustainability action plan and the outstanding Public Works Capital Improvements Program and very excited to see the outcomes of these commitments in the next decade. It was an honor to serve as Council Vice President and Public Safety Committee Chair to establish the Vision Zero program and support our fabulous firefighters and police force commitments to diversity and inclusion. This role has afforded great connections with our regional partners and state leadership and I am grateful for these opportunities to volunteer and serve while representing Redmond. On the Public Works Board, King County Boards, Cascade Water Alliance, and Association of Washington Cities in public safety, health, and emergency response, transportation, and infrastructure. I was also happy to be tapped by the mayor for the local disability board, making sure our safety retirees have healthcare and secure pension. Thank you for trusting me with this enormous responsibility and purposeful, meaningful work as your council member. We have accomplished great things together and I'm looking forward to what's next for you all. I have learned a lot and hope to see you around.
Thank you so much for those very kind words. We wish you the best on your next endeavor. The next item on the agenda is for the newly elected council members swearing in ceremony. We have the Honorable Judge Michael Finkel with us tonight to perform the swearing in and I'm going to give some instructions prior to this all happening. So we do have a packed house for this. It's so exciting to see so many community members come out in support of the city and these elected officials, soon to be sworn in elected officials. We will swear in the council members. They will sign their oath with the judge. Then we'll take some formal pictures with me and with the council. And then those that have cameras and want to do all the posing of the pictures can do that. We'll take a recess for that to happen and during that recess time, we have some cookies and beverages and we'll take about 30 minutes for people to say congratulations and all of that. But before we start, I see some people in the audience I just want to recognize. We already mentioned Representative Solahudin who's here. I see Senator Slaughter is here with us today. Former State Senator Eric Omeg is here with us today. Thank you, Eric. I'm very honored. My parents will be thrilled that former Governor Gary Locke is with us today as well. And I've also see some of our former council members here as well and I'm going to miss everyone if I see Councilmember Margeson and Byron Schutz and Arnie Tomack are here. And thank you, guys. Pat Bache, sorry, Pat, missed you.
And Margaret Doeman.
Councilmember Pat Bache. And I also see some of our school board members are here with us today as well. Where's Lindsey? Lindsey Yocum and Aspen Richter's here. I think that's all. Did I get everybody? Did I miss any? It's always bad to miss a lot.
Former Councilmember Margaret Doeman is in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry, Margaret. I even talked to you earlier. Former Councilmember Margaret Doeman is with us as well. So thank you all for being with us and all the family and friends that are here to celebrate with us as well. And with that, I want to invite our soon to be council members Menka Sony, Vivek Prakriya, and Melissa Stewart to come on down and get sworn in. Are you?
Is there a copy of the oath?
Yes, on each of them.
Oh, it's on the certificate. Okay. And there's a paper. Okay. Hello. Hi, I'm Judge Finkel. I get to do this every year and I love doing it and it's always an honor and a privilege. And wow, it's a packed crowd. I always call my calendar in reverse alphabetical order by last name because people at the beginning of the alphabet always get called first in court. And I'm not kidding, I do that. So I'm going to go in reverse alphabetical order rather than numerical order. So Ms. Stewart. Okay. So if you could raise your right hand and hopefully I won't swear you in for a search warrant. So if you could repeat after me. I, Melissa Stewart.
I, Melissa Stewart.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of City of Redmond Council, position number four.
To the office of City of Redmond Council, position four.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations, Councilmember. So you get to sign there. If you sign in the wrong spot, I guess I'm a council member. Okay. You pronounce it Sony or Soni?
Sony.
Sony, okay. I just like to get names right.
My.
Okay. It's not a brick or anything? Okay. All right.
Menka, if you want, he can hold it for you if you'd like. If you prefer that or you just want to hold it yourself, how do you want to do it?
I'm.
You're good? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. However you want to work it is good. All right. So if you could raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Menka Sony.
I, Menka Sony.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of City of Redmond Council, position number six.
To the office of Redmond City Council, position number six.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I would faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations, Councilmember. Thank you. Pleasure to meet you. Excuse me, but if you don't sign, you don't get the paycheck. So sign right there. Okay. Okay, I'll call it a signature. That's like younger people sign that way. Okay, and to whom? To you. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you all so much. Judge Finkel, thank you again, sir, for participating this. We just love having you. We hope to have you back one more time. We have a council position to appoint, so hopefully we can bring you back in and have you swear one more in before you retire. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Governor Locke. I feel very privileged to have heard that tonight. I think it's in our heads all the time, how fortunate we are to be in this country with such amazing founding documents that help guide us in all of our work. So thank you for sharing that. And with that, we were going to take a 30-minute recess and people can have some cookies and celebrate and then we'll be back in business in 30 minutes. We are recessed.
We are going to restart our council meeting, so if you could um go out and if you want to keep having conversations and photos of people on the hall, if uh please come in if you want to take part in the meeting. I do need all of the council members so that we can uh we can do our meetings, please.
And you're back on.
And we are reconvening. Our next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Council members generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW forty-two seventeen A five-five-five prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated in the sign in sheet. And there are probably thirteen people signed up in person and four online. Alright, and so we'll start with the first four names. We have Mariana Marti- Martinez, Kwon Chen, Barnum Majumdar, and Connor Graham. Is Mariana here? She went outside? She left, alright. Kwon Chen? Thank you, come on up to the microphone, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name's Chong Chen, Executive Director at the United Hub, a nonprofit organization based in Redmond. I'm here to express my support for the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. United Hub was invited to partner with the city on community outreach efforts in May twenty-twenty-five. Over the past six months, we have conducted focus groups and surveys to engage residents from a diverse background, with particular attention to the, to those first generation immigrants facing language barriers. We visited senior housing community and assisted residents with completing the survey to ensure their voice were fully represented. We also organized fun and creative community events that encourage broad, broader participants, such as a plant swap picnic at Idley Park and a thrifts red festival at the Redmond Senior and Community Center. After the festival, many attendees expressed interest in making it an annual event. In addition, we hosted the first ever heat pump workshop in Chinese in, at the same location. Families received answers to their questions during the workshop and several decided to install heat pump shortly afterward. We have received very positive feedback from these Redmond families. Uh, we also participate in large community events to gather further community input. We introduced the senior and the comm- uh, senior community center to a ve- as a venue option to organizers who ultimately moved their events from another city to Redmond. At the event, um, there were over nine hundred participants and we had a table there. We didn't stay behind the table. We walk around and talk to audience and collect the feedback directly. It proved to be very, um, efficient approach. Uh, in the past six months, we had bi-weekly meetings with the city staff. We have witnessed the transition, transition of a lens tax-heavy draft plan into an easy-to-understand plan organized around five big moves, complete with photos of our own community members. We truly appreciate the opportunity to serve as a bridge between the city and the community. The staff have been open-minded and receptive. They listened and they incorporate the community input directly into the plan, which will shape our daily lives.
And in conclusion?
Uh, I respectfully request the council consider adoption of this plan. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community.
Thank you. We have Barnum Majumdar. Barnum. Connor Graham. And then Faith two-three-eight-six. And then Aaron Hamilton.
Hello, council, once again. I'm here to talk about the old Firehouse Teen Center. I have been away for a while due to the effects this whole ordeal has had on my health. It got to the point where I ended up in urgent care on Thursday due to fainting and hitting my head. We don't know what caused that, but large mix of stuff. This has been taking a large toll on everyone who has been a part of this thing. There's a few people I would like to thank for actually, you know, listening to us. Uh, Gerald Lee Anderson, Steve Fields, Osman. Thank you guys so much for actually listening from, and I hope you guys actually listen to us this time when it comes to the rebuilding. You guys did not during the whole deciding thing. And it angered me that you guys literally brushed over what some of the members who are trying to help, you know, tell you what we wanted, you were just ignoring them. Thank you.
Next is Faith two-three-eight-six, then Aaron Hamilton, then, um, Oliver Choi.
I'll start by saying that my opinions are my own and don't represent anyone other than myself. So obviously, I'm not a big fan of the decision that this council made two weeks ago. But before I fully get into that, I'd like to respond directly to a comment that was made during discussion. I don't remember exactly which council member made it, I apologize. Of, do we really want to go through this same process again, X years down the line, if there is a renovation? My answer is yes. You should have given the teens time to grieve over the loss of the first real home some of them have ever had before just ripping it away from them. Let me emphasize, two weeks. These kids had only two weeks notice that a service they relied on was disappearing and moving to some horrible room in a rebadged LWX satellite campus for at least a year, likely more. I, I cannot shake the feeling that none of you have any idea what the firehouse actually means to these people or that you were trying to deliberately disorient and destabilize them so they couldn't actually get their thoughts together and organize. We've all been trying to balance support for this movement with our own mental health and it's been a horrible struggle. I'm certain you've noticed that our numbers haven't been as many as when this all started. And at this point, this process and this council, you, I'm not letting you hide behind processes, have worn almost all of them down to the point that they can't anymore justify going here to do nothing except for their, have their three-minute piece that no one is listening to. It's impossible for my mind to not be drawn to COVID through all this. For many of us, COVID took our mental health lifelines away and forced us to either forge new ones in record time or suffer. I was one of the lucky few who scrounged up some good ones, but my experience is not universal. Losing spaces to go means of interacting with your peers ruins your mental health in ways so fundamental it's hard to even describe. Despite that, let me, to be clear, express to the council how incredibly grateful I am to the teens who have showed up even once to speak in support of our movement and the organizers who have rallied us together in the first place. Heck, we've even got someone here who has been filling both of those, those roles, multiple people actually, organizing events and rallying people together while still being here to speak every single time. That passion and dedication to a cause is what I saw in the firehouse, its spirit. If you want to try to capture it again in another building, then none of us can stop you, you've made that much clear. But I don't have any confidence in that, any trust in centering teen voices. Everything in my being tells me you're just going to listen to us in the exact same way you have been for the past eight months. And if that makes you mad, if you think I'm totally off base, if you truly believe that this council has the will to create a teen-focused space that serves the needs of our community, then go ahead, prove me wrong. Please, for the love of God, prove me wrong. Until then, fuck off. Okay, bye.
Next is Aaron Hamilton, then Oliver Choi, then Wolf Adriatico.
So I just wanted to point out that the last meeting, you allowed a group of people stack their time under one name. You allowed them to not only do it, but to finish before you told them that it's not allowed. But when we tried it, we got yelled at, cut the mic off, and you surrounded a trans teenager with six cops. I mean, that's some real, gotta love that cis privilege, I guess. Maybe I need to detransition so I can get some of that shit. Alright, so it has taken me five months to cover just thirty minutes of the talking points that I've wanted to address, something I could easily knock out in one or two meetings. And I want, and you wonder why I go over time all the time. If that isn't dedication, I don't know what it is. But it's December and it's the perfect time to reflect and evaluate. So let's go back to June third. You all remember that night. Um, you were all smiles, shaking hands, taking photos, kissing babies for Pride Month and approving a resolution that's supposed to make this city safe and welcoming place for our community. Then I came up here and introduced you to the harsh reality of what it's actually like being a trans woman in Redmond. And then some misgendering happened, but at the end of it, you all said clearly, we have a lot of work to do. So over the next five months, I brought up to you incident after incident, issue after issue, city employees detonating, detonating people, the bullshit, the cops pulled at Pride, nothing, you know, doing nothing to stop anti-trans hate. And yes, even the police chief representing his department in the city at a community engagement event with an anti-trans group. Still waiting for that apology, that will probably never happen. So let's look at, let's go back and look at, uh, what this council, police department in the city has done to date since then. You've added a field on the public comment sheet for pronouns. Sorry, Republicans, I am the reason for that. You can send me your death threats. I will file them away with the two I've already received this year. Don't worry, I won't report you because I know the police won't do anything. That's it. So thank you so much for your efforts in making my community feel so welcome and so safe in Redmond. In fact, a couple of months ago, a wonderful gentleman sitting next to me at a bar felt the need to tell me the following. Hey dude, what did you do with your balls? Got them chopped off? No matter how hard you try, you do not look like a woman. Trans women are not women. I made sure his actions had consequences because that's how you change behavior, Chief Lo. Look at that, under time! Let's fucking go!
Next is Oliver Choi, then Wolf Adriatico, then Linda Seltzer. And then, uh, they're not, Guan Chen Desai.
Hi, good evening, um, mayor Angela and all the council member. My name is Oliver Choi with the Chinese Information Service Center. Just like to thank you for all your support all this year for the services that we provide to the, um, community. And bring some of the, um, senior here and, uh, they love the city and like to let them know some of their concerns. Um, the, um, member will speak in Chinese and now staff will translate in English.
Sir, um, we only allow people to speak that have signed up. So I don't want, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but is it, is there a way that you can share the information with us? Just you do it and then, um, we'll, well, we can follow up at, in January at our next meeting if we want to help you sign up properly so that we can hear from everybody. Sorry about that. We only take people who have signed up unfortunately. Next time, we'll, we'll work with you to make sure that we can get you signed up properly. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, I'm speaking on behalf of some of the resident in Redmond.
You can also email that into the council, sorry.
Yes. Firstly, talk about the transportation. Um, after the recent bus, uh, route changed, uh, the bus route two-twenty-one became two-twenty-two and now there are no bus stop, um, uh, along the Redmond, uh, Woodtonville Road. So, um, also the bus two-fifty removed from the Redmond Way stop. Um, their changes have made community much harder for many residents. Uh, we hope the city can reveal the bus stop location and add the two-twenty-two stop near the five station seventeen to better serve the neighborhood. Uh, secondly, um, there are many non-English speaking, uh, senior would like more English learning resources. Uh, there are very few, uh, beginner level classes. We hope the city can, um, offer basic English conversation classes and citizenship classes to help, uh, senior participating in the community more easily. Uh, thirdly, paths and trails need further maintenance, uh, better maintenance. The Anderson Park was, uh, closed for a long time for repair and the exercise equipment along the, uh, Riverside Trail was, uh, removed. We hope the repair can, um, move faster and more, um, what is that? And more benches, um, and, uh, senior friendly, uh, exercise equipment can be added. And fourthly, we hope the, uh, Redmond Community Center can offer more cultural and social services such as performance programs, dance classes, and ma jiang to help, uh, different groups, uh, connect. And lastly, uh, we are concerned about the quality of the public construction. We have been, we have seen crack around the light rail station in Dantang and we hope the city can, uh, strengthening inspection and maintenance. Uh, this is an main suggestion. We, we hope Redmond can, um, continue to become more convenient and, uh, friendly for everyone. We also hope, um, to return in the future to discuss more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, um, if you, I think I have your proper email address so we can have staff follow up with you on those items.
Okay, I'll give you the.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, next is Wolf Adi- Adriatico, then Linda Seltzer. Then, um, Gunjan Desai, then, uh, I think they're here for this swearing in, then David Morton.
I've noticed, uh, in the past several months that any time that the city wants to pat its back, it's always happy to do so. Uh, always making exceptions to the rules, always allowing speakers to have extra time, allowing them to stack time when that is not allowed. Um, setting aside different parts of, uh, setting aside separate items on the agenda to allow themselves to pat themselves on the back for extended periods of time. And any time that there is criticism that has come from the community, the city, especially the executive branch, um, prefers to follow the rules to the letter and always cut people off on the second. I've just found that very interesting. Another thing that I've noticed is the way this government runs is fascinating because I'm not sure how anything really gets done considering the amount of misinformation. the amount of misinformation that goes on internally. For example, the study session that the council had where they listened to the Parks Director speak about the Old Firehouse stakeholder group, they got all the dates wrong. They said that the folks groups were October 22nd and 24th. They were not. They were September 22nd and 24th. They stated that the process ran from, from August to October, which it did not. It ran from September to October. And also, the city's website says a completely different date. It says September to November. So considering all this conflicting information, I'm really not sure how you get anything done. And then with all the park staff quoting the facility condition assessment incorrectly stating that there is information that there is not, and the council does not review these documents themselves and find this misinformation for themselves. I just, it's enlightening.
Next is Linda Seltzer, then David Morton, then Eugenia Vidalis, Eugenio Vidalis, sorry.
Environmental sustainability needs to involve both individual actions and corporate responsibility. When I attended the Sustainability Public Input Meeting, I was concerned that the six pillars did not specify corporate responsibility. Corporate actions are causing environmental problems unnecessarily. This is occurring by means of a lack of employment security, and uncontrolled data collection and streaming. Prior to the pandemic, the average tenure in a job at Microsoft was seven years, and at Amazon, it was less than one year. The constant flux of workers creates an unnecessary demand to tear down the 16th most fertile valley in the United States to build high rises that increase and increase traffic pollution. Corporations are collecting data we don't want collected, to display ads we don't want to watch, to buy products we don't want to buy, and then we are charged additional electric bills, and nobody stands up for the citizens in those electric bill hearings. So individuals are being told, "How many people can travel to ride community van? That you have, you have to travel with somebody else. You can't ride alone." And "How many hours to park somewhere?" Our lives are micro-managed. But what are corporations being asked to change? I didn't, I don't really see anything about that. And I think that there really needs to be action to look at corporate responsibility for causing environmental problems. Thank you for considering this.
Next is David Morton, and then Eugenio Vidalis.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I'd like to comment on Redmond's 2025 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, or ESAP. I want to commend staff and the community for the extensive engagement process that shaped this plan. Over 500 in-person participants, multiple partnerships, and thoughtful integration of feedback. The shift to five big moves creates clearer focus than the 168 actions in the 2020 plan. But the revised timeline for city operations' carbon neutrality is concerning. The 2020 Climate Emergency Declaration committed to carbon neutrality by 2030, the new plan delays this another decade to 2040. While cost and capacity constraints are understandable, city operations represent Redmond's most direct sphere of control. Pushing this target back 10 years undermines your credibility as climate leaders. Changing the carbon neutrality timeline from 2030 to 2040 appeared relatively late in the process of formulating the ESAP. The Climate Emergency Declaration was a public commitment. Delaying it sends the wrong message about urgency. If 2030 is genuinely unachievable, some questions arise. Would it cost, what would it cost to meet the original target? What specific barriers exist? And can Redmond commit to accelerated interim targets? Also, it's concerning that Redmond depends on PSE meeting CETA's requirements for your community 2030 goals. The response in the issues matrix mentions advocacy and grid flexible technologies, but what are Redmond's concrete contingency plans? The grid capacity study with Bellevue is promising, but the plan needs proactive strategies. On the positive side, I appreciate the new metrics that Count Anonymous Vulnerable Community Members served, the emphasis on water resilience given your climate projections, and the inclusion of traditional ecological knowledge in landscaping guidance. The expanded salmon recovery actions show responsiveness to council feedback. My request, please don't simply approve this as a consent item without discussion. Shifting from 2030 to 2040 for carbon neutrality in city operations deserves public deliberation. Consider pulling this for further study or adding stronger interim commitments that show you're treating 2040 as a deadline, not the expected outcome. I ask that you not quietly extend your 2030 commitment to carbon neutrality without robust public conversation about why and what you'll do differently to accelerate progress. Thank you.
Next is Eugenio Vidalis. Maybe the third time I finally got it right.
Hello, City Council. My name is Eugenio Vidalis, and I live in Redmond. I'm here today to congratulate the returning city council member and to thank the outgoing council member for their service as community, as a community leader in Redmond. Thank you. I'm also here to stress the biggest challenge that this city council will have to solve. It's the main issue that won Zora Maldoni the New York mayoral race, and the same issue that won Katie Wilson the Seattle mayoral race. It's the housing crisis. According to Zillow, the average home price in Redmond right now is $1.3 million. In 2017, it was $700,000. Home prices have nearly doubled in the past 10 years. Wages have not doubled. The average rent of an apartment in Redmond is $2,800 a month. It is very difficult, if not impossible, to save up for a million dollar house while paying $2,000 to $3,000 in rent. The current housing market is unsustainable. If prices remain the same, nobody in the younger generation will ever be able to buy a home. I'm an electrical engineer, and my wife is a software project manager. We are financially literate and responsible. We cannot afford to buy a one-bedroom condo in Redmond. I love this city and am willing to pay the high price of rent to enjoy the quality of life this city provides. But I'm also financially fortunate and can afford to make that sacrifice. Many cannot. I'm reminded of something I read online. If the barista that pours your coffee can't afford to live in your neighborhood, you live in a theme park, not a real city. This city council must solve the housing crisis. Business as usual is not working. There are already some subsidized housing, zoning reform, and permitting reform projects in progress, and I really appreciate that. But until the price of housing comes down to at least pre-pandemic levels, the work is not done. I urge the city council to explore new solutions and pass bold plans to solve housing. I feel very excited about the future of Redmond thanks to this new council, but winning an election is not the finish line. It is the start of a very long uphill battle. Once again, congratulations on your election. Thank you for leading our city, and good luck on your future work. Thank you.
That is the end of write-in items from the answer in person. We have four people signed up online. We'll start with the first. Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Why? Thank you, Mayor Bernie. It's such a privilege. It's an honor to get a call from you. I've been waiting all night for this phone call. Redmond Council, Joe Consler here, Assistant Mayor with pronouns he, him, his, and Vanessa Kritcher superfan, sticking away from my heart, a heart wrapped around a certain president who is not named Donald Trump, and a great leader. But we do have one last crisis of democracy in this term. It's fitting that the Kritcher presidency term one began of a crisis of democracy in between elections that tempered, that ended up tempering out Zimmerman's hate, and we're into another crisis. You've seen many governments pick their officers who affect public comment first. That's against RCHW 42.30. I decided to sound the alarm now across the state because in the immortal words of Santa Marian, quote, "It's significant to act in a way that you leave behind more good than bad," end quote. President Kritcher, in my opinion, and all these are my opinions alone, has accomplished this by any measure. I'm not sure I have. I'm not sure, you know, I'll let others judge. I've sent an email to council and city attorney as well as others about, about my concerns, but need to comply with RCHW 42.30.020 and have public comment before picking council officers. I want to quote Gal Gadot to you as well, quote, "Miracles happen when courage, care, and love come together," end quote. Let that be the story of the Kritcher era, because we've seen a lot of miracles won by uphill battles. 24 months ago, Alex Zimmerman was hurling hate here and in Bellevue. Now Zimmerman is serving six, rotating exclusions. Why? Because this president and her team stood up and said, "We can have council rules that have a city business guideline. We can stand up for justice." And Bellevue listened and adopted those rules because of the morality and ethics of this president. I'm so grateful we have someone who's standing up to make democracy safe and accessible for everyone. But Redmond is also taking serious steps towards sustainability, another miracle. And also, I attend some transit meetings virtually. I hear of these Vanessa Kritcher fans who are coming down via link because they want to cheer on the Redmond City Council, because you guys are great fighter pilots for democracy. I also want to make a presentation to the Redmond City Council, January 6th, but I don't know how to. You know, because I want to go on for more than three minutes. I've got about 30 seconds left, so a few rapid-fire things first. I always speak for me, and if anyone's ever felt I spoke for anyone else, I do want to apologize, but especially to President Kritcher. I feel very nauseous about that, and I will apologize in person on January 6th. You know, moving on, you know, I quote, in conclusion, Redmond is style, I quote Yu Slidzki, "Without a just peace, hatred will not fade, it will continue to smolder and provoke new violence. History has seen this before, and this time it must be different," end quote. I'm out of time, so I'm just going to say I'm deeply grateful for the Redmond City Council rules and leadership of this president. Like to know if she wants a term two or not.
So you're out of time.
Thank you. I got to go. Yes, ma'am.
Next is Noah Radford. You have three minutes to address the council.
Well, hello, Redmond City Leadership. It's been quite an interesting several months. First and foremost, congratulations to those who are re-elected or have recently been elected. You're being given an awesome opportunity to shape Redmond for the better or for the worse. And I think that some special accommodation needs to be made for two people who are outgoing, who have done a very, very good job of showing, I think, a lot of Redmond youth that not everybody is willing to rubber stamp whatever is easiest for them. And so, a big accolade goes to Steve Fields and Gerald Lee Anderson. Representative Sal Houdin, a lot of opportunities to make some positive change with the lessons that you've got here in Redmond. And I want to thank Redmond City Leadership for putting their money where their mouth is on the small issue of keeping the location of the teen center where it is. It's, it's a possibility that we could save a 75-year-old building with lots of, a lot of beauty and history, and I will miss it very much. But it is on the youth to make something cool. There's nothing that, there's nothing that us old fogies are going to be able to do, no matter where something is, no matter where it is. But the fact that you have listened at, I'm assuming, what must seem like the very, very minimum, you've given them a location. And I would pray that you do at least the minimum of listening to them in terms of what they need. Redmond has a goldmine opportunity of having a venue, a real, safe, all-ages venue, a music hub where people can record music, share art, and have more great Pacific Northwest artists. You, you have the opportunity to make this the last stand of indie music in this region. So, in conclusion, thank you for what little you have done, and shame on you for making everybody work so fucking hard for it. Thank you so much.
Next is Sasha Glenn. Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Wonderful, thank you. As I said, my name is Sasha Glenn. I am a parent. Most importantly and first and foremost, I'm also a local attorney and a resident of Redmond. I called in tonight to comment on the decision-making process surrounding the Old Firehouse Teen Center. The process has been more than disappointing, and the city's adamant refusal to evaluate facts and numbers related to restoration of the historic cultural space has been shocking. The actions I've observed and my close review of public records have led me to suspect the city has had plans to sell the $5 million lot the Old Firehouse sits on, and that its closure was a predetermined outcome regardless of the facts. However, I would like to thank Council Member Fields for his integrity, compassion for the community, and efforts to require transparency in the city of Redmond's decision-making, despite the political pressure he knew he would receive. I would also like to thank Council Member Anderson for her kindness, support for the community, and efforts to encourage a good-faith decision-making process. Both council members will no longer be on council in 2026, and it is a real shame, as they were the only council members willing to do the work to look at this issue deeply before making a permanent decision to close the Old Firehouse Teen Center. At the last business meeting, they each made a motion requesting council and the mayor to look deeply at the facts and figures related to renovating and preserving the Old Firehouse Teen Center before they destroy it permanently. But council and the mayor continue to refuse to look at the facts and gather this critical information, ignoring the outcries of dozens of teens and thousands of community members. I am still hopeful, though, that the council members remaining will have a change of heart and demand a transparent and fact-based decision-making process on this issue, and that the new members of council will also want to take a closer look at the possibility of renovating and saving the historic cultural space where budding teen artists and musicians can continue to thrive in our community. Lastly, I'd like to thank Representative Sal Houdin for listening to the community. I hope you will be inspired to take action to help the city set this issue on the right track. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, next we have Max Roman.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Max Roman?
Is not available.
Mr. Roman was the last person signed up for items from the audience, and since he is unavailable, items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled? Seeing none. Give me a moment. There are items I need to read into the agenda, and it's the last meeting of the year, so that means there's a lot of them. So have a moment. Resolution number 1616, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting the 2025-2030 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. Ordinance number 3237, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan by repealing the Capitol Facilities Plan 2025 to 30. Adopting the Redmond Capitol Facilities Plan 2050, general government providing for several ability for severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-two thirty-eight, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan by adopting the 2025-2050 Redmond Fire Functional Plan, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-two thirty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the Redmond Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04, General Business Regulations, for Conformance with State Legislation to Clarify Communication and Transparency Standards and to Establish Business Licensing Requirements for Short-Term Rental Business Operations, Providing for Severability and Establishing an Effective Date. Ordinance number thirty-two forty, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the Redmond Municipal Code, Chapter 3.10, Subsection 3.10.080C, Park Impact Fee Schedule, Subsection 3.10.080D, School Impact Fees, and Subsection 3.10.100C, Transportation Impact Fee Schedule, Providing for Severability and Establishing an Effective Date. Resolution number sixteen seventeen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Sections 1.40, 7.20, 7.75, 9.30, 9.60, 9.70, 9.130, 9.140, and 10.20, and establishing Sections 13.35 and 13.60 of the Redmond Personnel Manual. Resolution number sixteen eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting City of Redmond Personnel Manual, Section 1.40, for future changes to the summary plan description for the City of Redmond Self-Inured Medical Plan. Ordinance number thirty-two forty-one, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Pay Plans A and AF dash S in order to set salaries for employees covered by the AFSPB bargaining unit of the year 2026, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. An ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Pay Plan EO in order to set salaries for our elected officials for the year 2026, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-two forty-three, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the 2026 P-Pay Plan for Employees Covered by the Teamsters Local Union, Number 117, Representing Law Enforcement Officers. And ordinance number thirty-two forty-four, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the 2026 FS-Pay Plan for Employees Covered by the International Association of Firefighters, Number 2829, Union Representing the Represented Fire Support Employees in the Fire Department. With that, are there comments this evening? I see Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the ESAP. We had two community members make very good points tonight, and I, while I am in favor of approving the plan tonight, I definitely think that in the new year, we should study the topics that were brought up in tonight's public comment.
Thank you. Council President.
Yes, I also wanted to follow up. First of all, I just want to say thanks. It was really wonderful to hear from community members about their deep engagement with the ESAP process, so thank you so much for sharing about that, and kudos to our staff for doing such deep engagement and reaching out to community. It just was very powerful to hear about that tonight and throughout the process, and I'm excited to approve this tonight. I do appreciate the comment that we received about adding a specific target of twenty-fourty. It actually was in response to feedback that we got saying that the plan had said, "We're going to miss this target," and not specifying, "When is the next, when will we do it by?" And so I do appreciate the staff saying, "When realistically can we do it by so we can hold ourselves accountable to that?" I love the idea of being able to look at what are our milestones in between along that timeline, and we've received some assurances from staff that we will be seeing that, that come back as we move along this. And I think we should hold ourselves accountable to that, to that goal, and to making as quick progress as we can, because we can't wait to take this action to address climate change and to reduce our carbon footprint. Future generations are depending on us, and I'm glad to support this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, thank you. There is a lot in this very dense consent agenda, so again, I wanted to thank the members of the public who were so deeply engaged in the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, and it is continuing work that we will do. With this consent agenda, we are also appointing my colleague, Councilmember Noeva Kamina, to serve as a board of, on the Board of Supervisors for the Community Facilities District, and I really appreciate her willingness to serve in this public-private partnership with us. And also huge congratulations to the entire fire team and all those who were involved in the Fire Functional Plan. It is a very consequential amendment to our comprehensive plan, and really looking forward to seeing all of the great work in action over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, all of our members are in person tonight, and so we will be taking a voice vote. I love those to end out the year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you all very much. The next item of business is ombuds report. Councilmember Fields had the month of November, and he is not here tonight. Councilmember Noeva Kamina, you have the month of December. Do you have anything to report?
So far, everything has been nice and quiet for the month of December. I hope I just didn't jinx myself, but I will be ready to give a full report when we come back.
Great, thank you so much. Any other ombuds items? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Earlier today, I attended the Association of Washington City State Legislative Session Preview. Much of that agenda we have discussed previously. I did want to note for the council that the automatic license plate reader technology is becoming an emergent issue for the upcoming session, and that was discussed in detail today. This is emerging both as a topic of vendor accountability that we certainly did cover in our city's legislative agenda, but also part of the more recent conversation on this and potential need for legislative fixes is wrestling with the gaps in, that are coming up in the public records questions. So we have seen those widely reported in the media and the like. So anyway, had a great follow-up conversation with A W C staff on this particular topic, and it's certainly one to continue to watch. For my own part, I also wanted to mention that I've had several conversations and lots of community questions regarding the council vacancy process, have been able to share the website where all of that is posted. Additionally, Redmond Lights kicks off this weekend, my favorite Redmond event of the year, so thank you so much to our arts and culture team for all of your work to make that festival such an awesome success. Saturday, the festivities start at four PM and the family promenade at six PM, so hope to see everyone there. Thanks.
Thank you. Other ombuds items? Council Vice President.
Thank you. I also spoke with some folks about the council vacancy and that process, had some continuing conversations about the teen center, continuing conversation about the not-so-new-but-new stop sign at One Fortieth and the need for the cones and flags to come back, so I will be following up with Director Burt on that one. Conversation with community members at Sixty-O-One following a domestic violence incident over there, conversation about welcoming week and some staff conversations that have happened, and a conversation with a community member about how STEM kids can volunteer with the city. And then I followed up on the email that many of us got from the Montessori school looking to, looking at the teen center land and letting them know that that decision has been made and the teen center will be rebuilt on that land.
Thank you. I also want to share that I shared Mr. Troy's contact information to help on the items he brought up from his community, and also emailed our clerk about how to help him and his group sign up to get their message across like they had anticipated. So just want to make sure everyone knew I followed up with that. Council President, did you have some ombuds items as well?
Yeah, I'll just note that earlier today, the mayor and I did an information session, and we had several residents come to learn about the council vacancy process, as well as to just learn about the role of a council member and what we do, and it was a really great discussion. We had a lot of good questions from folks that are interested in applying for the position. As a reminder, the application is open until January second, and then the council will be choosing after January second, folks to interview. The interviews will take place on January thirteenth, the first round, and then there'll be a second round and decision on January twentieth. So for anyone following that process, just a little quick reminder, but thanks to everyone who came out, and I know we also recorded that session, and it'll be posted online, so anyone who's interested can also listen into that.
Thank you so much. Any other ombuds items for this evening? All right, seeing none. Are there any committee reports? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Earlier tonight, we had the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Key item from that meeting is we moved to the consent agenda a contract for our citywide speed study, which is in support of our Safe Streets for All Action Plan and the Transportation Master Plan, so looking forward to seeing that work come back later in 2026. I also attended the Growth Management Planning Council at King County, where we adopted a revised charter for the Affordable Housing Committee, and something that was really important to the SCA Caucus, which I currently chair, is we worked on our 2026 work plan, including a request for staff to bring forward the conversation regarding housing monitoring and housing affordability monitoring sooner. This is part of our role as caretakers of the countywide planning policies on these pieces. So the G M P C will have a staff briefing at our next meeting regarding the effort to standardize the annual reporting process for King County jurisdictions, as well as technical support in development so that SCA member cities can participate confidently. I also attended the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee. Headline there, "We should all send our best wishes to Tom Markle on a happy retirement." He has certainly made an indelible mark on the Redmond community in his many years here. We also had a briefing from the East Link Connections Team, that's both Sound Transit and Metro, regarding some service enhancements that both occurred in the fall and will occur again in the spring. And that, that group, Government Affairs, received a preview of the 2026 code maintenance packages, and I just have to say how exciting it is to get back on schedule with annual code maintenance, because we have done so much work to rebuild the code over the last few years, and it's really nice just to see annual cleanup coming our way on a regular schedule. That committee is also very engaged and speaking directly with staff regarding their feedback on the process improvement study. Finally, I participated in the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, excuse me, Nominating Committee. This is where we collated, reviewed, and made a recommendation for a slate of appointments to the regional boards and committees. We received eighty-four applications from thirty-three cities, including eleven applications from newly-elected municipal officers. So the slate will be published on Thursday, along with the rest of the materials for the pick packet next week. One thing that is a little bit different this year than maybe the most immediate prior years is that there are not many vacancies remaining following the adoption of this particular slate. One thing that I hope our city can work on next year and our council can work on is having a set of targeted committees and boards that Team Redmond would like to be representing on and be able to move forward applications for as vacancies do come up. So look for the full list on Thursday. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Stewart, for being, participating in that nominating committee. It's extremely important for the region and for Sound Cities. Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I attended the Riot Eight Salmon Recovery Council meeting, where we looked at criteria for our upcoming grant program round that'll happen next year for the Cooperative Watershed Man, Grant, Management Grant Program. We also approved, in recent years, we've started a new grant program that's called the Project Innovation and Community Grants Program, because the kind of typical one that we do are for really big projects, and we often want to give project sponsors the opportunity to pilot things and to get them off the ground. And so we created a smaller grant program that can be a little more flexible for folks to be able to do kind of some of that pre-work, as well as for especially educational programs to be able to test the waters, as you may say. And we also approved our 2026 state legislative priorities with a lot of key priorities, and we got to hear an update from Trout Unlimited about an effort they're going to be doing to advance legislation to ban six PPD from tires in the upcoming time, which I believe we have some basic things in our state legislative agenda that can align with everything that fits in here, but that's definitely one that I think will be a very interesting aspect for us to look at during session. We also got to hear a really exciting presentation about something that we've funded over years, but that finally has been completed, which is the, a restoration project that has been massive on the lower section of Issaquah Creek through Lake Samamish State Park. So, and there's a really cool video I'll send out to the council to be able to see kind of what it took to do that project, but Riot Eight and the City of Redmond's contribution towards that have been huge. So really exciting to see the impacts of our salmon recovery work. We also had a email meeting of the Lake Samamish Kokony Interlocal Agreement Management Committee to update the budget for that collective work that we're doing in Lake Samamish for Kokony recovery. There was some very urgent needs to be able to make adjustments to our budget and programming to be able to support some of the changes that happened in the watershed, and so I did vote to approve that, along with the other jurisdictions around the lake, which include the cities around the lake and the Snoqualmie Tribe, as well as King County. I will also note that I, myself and the mayor, were able to represent the City of Redmond at the National League of Cities Conference in Salt Lake City about two weeks ago, or a week and a half ago? I don't even know. And it was fantastic. I will send a full update with some links to the council, but a couple things that I'll just note that I found really fascinating about going to that conference, there were over thirty-five hundred city leaders from every state across the country getting together, sharing knowledge and best practices. And I got to do both mobile, like, interactive workshops in the City of Salt Lake City with some of their public work staff and some of their human services staff, and then also get into conversation and workshops there. A couple things that I found very inspiring that I will send along, one is that Salt Lake City has a really exciting youth media center that they did in public-private partnership with a really amazing organization, and they built it for teens by teens, and so was, got to hear all about that process from them of what it looked like to develop that, and I think will be a cool example as we look to advancing our own rebuilding of our teen center. We also got to see some of their permanent supportive housing and their approach to combining social enterprise and wraparound services and housing and creating that continuum to help people to exit homelessness. And I got to attend a lot of workshops where people were talking about not only how do we do the policies to address our housing needs, but also how do we, how do we support our communities in coming along? One of the things that they use as a term in one of the projects that we saw is "human-first" housing, and I thought that that was a really interesting kind of piece there. I'll also say, there's a lot of discussion about Vision Zero, first-last-mile, and how we can transform our streets to make them even safer and create those nudges so that it's just easy for people to get around, and really people from Alabama to California to Salt Lake City to, you know, all over to Maryland, College Park, Maryland, were talking about the same issues we're talking about right here in Redmond. And so I just think it's really fantastic for us to be able to think about what we can learn from others, and also that hopefully we can scale best practices here in our city to address some of the most difficult challenges. And then last, I'll just say, the mayor and I did have an opportunity to talk with Flock, who was there at the conference, and to be able to ask them about some of the questions that we had, and we'll be, I'll be following up with some more information on that. Also, per the council's request, we are getting an executive session on the schedule so we can talk about some of the legal issues related to questions we've raised about Flock and looking at that path going forward. But definitely a lot of discussion about automatic license plate readers and other cities asking about things we're doing here in Redmond, conversations we've been having. So look forward to discussing more with the council on all this. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Thank you. Very quickly, I know I mentioned the housing trip that Mayor Bernie and I were on two weeks ago, and I will be sending to council the booklet that we received and all the suggested readings, which was very helpful in those conversations, and I'll also be following up with you all about some of the legislative suggestions that, that we talked about on that trip. I also wanted to share that I did apply for an A W C committee. I applied for the Education Committee after I was reached out to by some of the staff, so hopefully in that suggested slate of folks, maybe I will be on that. So hopefully I'll be serving on that committee for you all soon.
Great. Thank you, that's great. Yes, and as a follow-up to the trip to Phoenix that we did on housing, Director Helen went with us as well, and she is going to be presenting to the local, local, local services? No, local government, sorry, local government committee in the House, I think, on Friday, with some of the information from the City of Redmond to help, help think about what's going to happen next year in housing. So we appreciate Director Helen doing that and going with us on that trip. It was very informative. Any- Any other committee reports? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Very brief on Cascade Water Alliance, even though that we've been getting a lot of rain. Thinking back about how dry our year has been, our water supply conditions had been running low, but thanks to the rain, the region has been receiving recently, Seattle Public Utilities confirmed its reservoirs are starting to refill, and we will not be activating its water shortage contingency plan. At the last board meeting, we also acknowledged a couple of very longtime Cascade leaders, the Cascade Chair Penny Sweet from Kirkland Chamber, or from Kirkland Council, as well as the Secretarian's Treasurer Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of Issaquah. Now, with them coming off, then we did need to appoint new officers in the interim until the board is able to appoint new officers for two-year terms, and our own mayor, Angela Burney, is going to be chairing in the interim as of January 1st. And all Cascade Water Alliance meetings for December have been canceled. That concludes my report.
Thank you for reporting on that. I was unable to attend in person, but it was a really great thank you to both former Mayor Sweet and Mayor Mary Lou Polly as well, and so thank you for being there for that.
Absolutely. And thank you for chairing in the interim for us.
You're welcome. Any other committee reports? I just have a couple of things to report on. I had mentioned last, last business meeting that I had attended the Local Leaders Forum in Rio de Janeiro, and so wanted to give a little more detail on that. It brought together mayors, governors, and local leaders from around the world to highlight how cities are driving climate action on the ground, and I think it's very timely with our, a passing of our ESAP just now. Central message, especially for the U.S. delegation, focused on how cities are committed to advancing climate action even as national and global priorities shift. We also highlighted the many ways local climate action remains one of the strongest levers we have to cut emissions and support community well-being. I was there with, through a grant, as part of the Climate Mary Steering Committee, and also represented Washington as the only mayor from Washington State at the forum. I was able to exchange ideas with leaders from across the globe and highlight our major climate wins over the past year, including light rail, Redmond 2050 zoning changes, and the ways we're making transit-oriented housing more affordable and accessible. I also had the opportunity to take part in a small side meeting with Gina McCarthy, European Union staff, and two other U.S. mayors to discuss how cities in Europe and the U.S. can share information, learn from one another, and explore future collaboration around climate action and resilience. I left the gathering with confidence that Redmond is not only doing our part, but we're also demonstrating what community-driven climate leadership looks like, and as I shared in Rio, Redmond's clean energy transition is well underway, and we're excited to continue moving this work forward under the updated 2025 ESAP. So it was a great conference, it was really amazing to be there, and I'm just so proud of the work that the city and staff, thank you, Jenny Liebeck, have been able to do over the years, so thanks, everyone. I wanted to also give a quick update on Sound Transit. Many people know that there's a, three more light rail stations opening on Saturday, start ending in federal way, so that should be a wonderful celebration to extend how to get around by light rail, and they continue testing on the bridge, so we're looking forward to hopefully, having a date for the opening coming up soon in the new year to make sure that we are going across the bridge, hopefully, by the, by the end of spring next year, so very excited about that. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that I had the opportunity today to have a meeting with Senator Patty Murray, with some other leaders in the region, talking about the continuum of care funding that is under challenge right now by the federal government. We are committed to working with her, and she is committed to doing her best to try to reverse the decision by the federal government. For those that haven't paid attention, right now, the federal government is intending to cut any kind of permanent supportive housing funding down to only 30% of funding, which a lot of people have feelings about permanent supportive housing, but what that really means is it's housing with services available on the premises. We have multiple supportive housing in our city, some things like education or help finding childcare are considered permanent supportive housing, so we have people in our community that if this funding is cut, have the challenge of being, ending up without housing. So we are doing everything we can to ensure that the federal government steps up and continues to support people that are housed, and as we shared with her, local government, state government, county government does not have the funds to fund the gap, and we're all extremely concerned about this. So more to come as we continue to work with her and our partners to ensure that all of our community members that are housed remain housed, and we'll continue to work to house the remaining unhoused community members as well, so just want to give you all an update on that. So the good news about that is we're all working regionally together, and the state is working with us as well, and you know, more to come on that. With that, that's the end of our committee reports. Is there any more business to come before the council this evening? And as an information, next week, council will be having a two-hour Committee of the Whole meeting, starting at 4:30, with the council meeting being canceled, so all of the, all of the items will be covered in that Committee of the Whole meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.